From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors Meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors Meeting will convene momentarily.
Board to reconvene, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Good afternoon and welcome to the Tuesday, June 29th, 2:00 PM meeting of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. We'll first hear from County Council, Margot Arizon, for a report taken on action in closed
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, member of the board. In addition to item number 35, which I believe you will be discussing in just a minute, you heard items 34, 37, 38, 39, and 40 in closed session. Item 36 was withdrawn.
Thank you. So I would like to make an announcement regarding item one on Monday, June 28th, special meeting in closed session agenda. vote to appoint Mr. Aaron Duncan as the Kern County Fire Chief effective Monday, July 19th, 2021. Mr. Duncan has 20 years of experience with the Kern County Fire Department, currently serving as deputy fire chief, and previously as battalion chief and chief investigator, providing key management over activities of all department personnel and special programs. Mr. Duncan also has years of experience serving as a dedicated manager and lead within the Emergency Operations Center, most recently bringing his qualified leadership to the COVID-19 pandemic and mass vaccination clinic. The county is extremely fortunate to have Mr. Duncan's outstanding knowledge, skills, and leadership experience in this critical role. We are confident he will greatly serve and protect the residents and communities of Kern County. I would like to invite you to say a few words.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Board. Thank you for the opportunity that you've given me to lead this fire department into the future. I've served this community, and I look forward to all the great things we can do. I appreciate all the support you give me, and we have great, great goals in front of us, and we're going to do a great job serving this community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who are these young men here with you today?
Yeah, this is my...
This is my boys.
This is my oldest son, Kayden, my middle son, Tristan, and my youngest son, Quinn.
Oh, fantastic. Well, good to see you guys. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're looking forward to working with you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
I feel really good about the state of the Kern County Fire Department based on the conversations that we've had in the last several days. And I hope you surround yourself with some of those folks because they're great folks.
From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Board to reconvene. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Peters?
Here.
Supervisor Scrivner?
Here.
Supervisor Maggert?
Here.
Supervisor Couch?
Supervisor Perez?
Here.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Tuesday, June 29th, 2:00 PM meeting of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. We'll first hear from County Council Margot Arzon for a report taken on action in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, member of the board. In addition to item number 35, which I believe you will be discussing in just a minute, you heard items 34, 37, 38, 39, and 40 in closed session. Item 36 was withdrawn.
Thank you. So I would like to make an announcement regarding item one on Monday, June 28th, special meeting in closed session agenda. While meeting in closed session, the Board of Supervisors voted unanimously on a 5-0 vote to appoint Mr. Aaron Duncan as the Kern County Fire Chief effective Monday, July 19th, 2021. Mr. Duncan has 20 years of experience with the Kern County Fire Department, currently serving as Deputy Fire Chief, and previously as Battalion Chief and Chief Investigator, providing key management over activities of all department personnel and special programs. Mr. Duncan also has years of experience serving as a dedicated manager and lead within the Emergency Operations Center, most recently bringing his qualified leadership to the COVID-19 pandemic and mass vaccination clinic. The county is extremely fortunate to have Mr. Duncan's outstanding knowledge, skills, and leadership experience in this critical role. We are confident he will greatly serve and protect the residents and communities of Kern County. Mr. Duncan, we are proud to announce you today as our new Kern County Fire Chief, and I would like to invite you to say a few words.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Board. Thank you, CAO's Office. Thank you for the opportunity that you've given me to lead this fire department into the future. I've been with this department for 20 years. I've served this community, and I look forward to all the great things we can do. I appreciate all the support you give me, and we have great, great goals in front of us, and we're going to do a great job serving this community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who are these young men here with you today?
Yeah, this is my boys. This is my oldest son, Kayden, my middle son Tristan, and my youngest son, Quinn.
Oh, fantastic. Good to see you guys. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're looking forward to working with you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Absolutely.
I just want to tell you that you had stiff competition. There were some really outstanding people and impressive people that we talked to, and I feel really good about the state of the Kern County Fire Department based on the conversations that we've had in the last several days. And I hope you surround yourself with some of those folks because they're great folks. And I'm even very impressed also, Chief Witt, with the state in which you have left the department upon your retirement. Thank you very much for your service, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Supervisor Perez?
Thank you. David, thank you for saying that. You have really excellent people in your department. It was a stunning interview process that was so much harder than I could have imagined. And what that tells me is that you just have great people in place. And I think the only person more universally loved than you is the chief standing behind you, who I've got to learn even a lot more than, a lot more about in this interview process, and what an extraordinary job of leadership and preparation and building a pipeline in your eventual absence that you have done. You have a succession plan unlike any that I have seen in putting forth people who are credible and have clearly remarkable character and are going to bring a lot to Kern. I love that you have your boys here. I have two. Both of mine are growing their hair long, so I totally dig that side. I think it's totally in. But gosh, what a beautiful family you have. It's remarkable to have you at the head and representing Kern County in our many, many facets and many kinds of families. We're a growing and changing world, and it's so nice to have you at the helm, in particular with your quivers there that will become, I'm assuming, I know, great contributors to Kern County as well with all the factors that will contribute to making them great in your wake. So hats off to you. God bless your family, and we look forward to your leadership. I think we have a new chapter in the Kern County Fire Department. I feel that very strongly, and I'm excited. I mean, we've always had a great fire department, but I think you're going to take us to another level, and I'm excited. Chief, thank you for your legacy and the people that you have prepared. I'm excited, and I look forward to strong partnership with you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Perez. Supervisor Maggert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief Duncan, congratulations. I'm happy for you, and I ask your big, strong sons to be patient with your father because we're going to demand a lot of him. And we promise not to drag you in public very often. You don't have to worry about this again for a long, long time, probably till he retires, like 100 years from now. But congratulations, Chief. We are happy that you stepped up. We're very excited about your leadership. I wanted to tell you and the public that I am very heartened by the depth of commitment and passion and the fountain of ideas, not only you, but all those who we interviewed for this process have. It is a great sign for the future of the Kern County Fire Department, and I hope that you will do all you can to fully understand those great ideas that the others had, that they brought to the table, because you are certainly impressive on your own. But when you layer in your leadership with the insight and leadership potential of all those others that were at the table with us as we interviewed you guys, we are really in for a good future. So I hope you take advantage of that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Scrivner. Sorry.
No, thank you, Chairman Peters. Well, first and foremost, Aaron, congratulations. I'm very excited for you and for your family. I'm sure you boys are very proud of your dad, and he's going to make you even more proud when he takes over the reins here pretty quickly. Chief Witt, one of the things that we did glean from these interviews is you're leaving this department in great shape. You've accomplished a lot, and thank you. And I know that, you know, Aaron has learned a lot under your leadership and tutelage. Just to reiterate what my colleague said, I don't think I could say it any better, but we all feel, based on the interviews that we did, that we don't have a thin bench in the Kern County Fire Department. There's a lot of talent, a lot of very capable people, and so I'm also heartened for the future. And so congratulations, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And once again, Chief Duncan, congratulations. I know you're going to do a great job. And Chief Witt, thank you for all of your service to the county and for leaving the department in such great shape and in such great condition to hand off to our new chief. So thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity. Take care.
Okay, so we'll next begin considering the consent agenda. All items listed with a CA or C above the items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. The CA represents the consent agenda of the Board of Supervisors, while the C represents the consent agenda for the Kern Sanitation Authority. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if a member of the public wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item on the consent agenda, then may do so prior to a vote being taken. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. A member of the public may also comment on any closed session item. At this time, I'll read the consent agenda item numbers for the Board of Supervisors agenda, and that is items five through nine on page three, 10 through 12 on page four, 13 through 19 on page five, 20 through 27 on page six, and 28 through 31 on page seven. Additionally, item number four, excuse me, misplaced. Okay. Item number four has been changed under Planning and Natural Resources Department. There's been a change to the recommended action. Strike all language in caps and insert "continue" to Tuesday, July 20th, 2021 at 2:00 PM. And that will remain on consent. Thank you. And lastly, item number nine has been withdrawn by the staff and will not be considered today. So with that, is there any member of the public that would like to speak regarding the consent agenda? Yes, sir. Please come down to the podium.
Yes, my name's Josh Taylor, and I'd just like to ask the Board if they would remove item 25, SB 419 stern, from consent agenda so it could be heard by the public.
Okay. Thank you. Any other speakers wishing to speak regarding the consent agenda? Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Supervisor Couch?
We haven't had a member of the public ask to have an item pulled for so long, I've forgotten how we do that, actually. Does a member of the Board have to ask for it, or is that... Okay, I'll ask for separate consideration for item... It was 25, correct? Yep. Thank you.
Do we need a vote on that? Or is it just...
No, a Board member can pull an item.
That's what I thought. Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the remainder of the consent agenda? Okay, would any members of the Board like an item removed for discussion? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda and to adjourn as the Kern County Board of Supervisors and reconvene as the Kern Sanitation Authority.
So move with separate consideration for item 25.
Second. Thank you. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. Four ayes, one absent. Supervisor Perez?
Great. Okay, so we are now sitting as the Kern Sanitation Authority, and we'll consider the consent agenda item, which includes items C1. Is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak regarding this item? Please come down to the podium. Please come down to the podium so we can hear you.
So y'all said that there's a retroactive amount for the people that have been displaced, I'm going to call that, because that seems to be the nicest way to say this right now. I believe it's amendment 27. I'll give you time to look.
Okay, yeah, just for a moment.
You're welcome.
And this is...
27, California. If you didn't say California, 27, I would...
Okay, which item, 27, you said?
Yep, that's the one, yes. Yes, Mr. Peters.
Okay, that was what we just voted on a minute ago?
Okay, what did we vote? Because I don't understand it. We're supposed to be... Can you explain further? I have very many questions.
So that's already been voted on and approved, but the item 27 is regarding the Sheriff's Department?
It's regarding the people that have been sitting and sleeping in rooms that are over at the Kern Town Hotel or whatever, amongst other places. And it says that there's... You don't want me to hear? Why not? I mean...
No, no, I'm saying that that's not what item 27 is. That is extra help for detention.
Well, that's from what I read. It says right here, also in number three, that it's an agreement, right, that y'all depended on, right? Supposed to be the reentry of a few people, and it's supposed to be all of them. And you're also saying it's retroactive, and the compensation is 396 for a new total to amount not 4.59 or something like that? How are we supposed to get the money to the people? Do we need to go behind closed doors?
I think you're looking at the wrong item.
Maybe I am. Maybe I'm looking at 26 also. Yeah.
Oh, okay. I got you. Yeah, that was this morning.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, yeah, that was from the meeting this morning that's already been voted on and passed, and that item's not already...
Okay, so how are we...
Okay, that is under the probation department. If you'd like, maybe our CAO, Mr. Alsop, can get your info and put you in touch with somebody from the probation department that can explain that.
Okay, so you guys have security, but you don't have probation that goes there? Is that what you are telling me, sir?
I'm telling you that if you would like more information on this, if you get your information to Mr. Alsop, he can put you in touch with somebody from their department that will get you whatever information you need. So if you could just leave your information, your contact info, we'll reach back out to you.
Can I say something?
Yes, please.
Ma'am, I'm so sorry for the confusion. This morning, we had an agenda, and then this afternoon, we have an agenda. That item, confusingly, clearly, was on the morning agenda. The agenda looks the same for the AM and the PM. So we've gone through that legally. We cannot do anything about it anymore, because if you were like a few minutes late or something, we can have some deviation. But you thought it was on the PM, and that's not your fault. That is a mistake that happens all the time. What we need to do now is get your information so that we can work with you to deal with however we can deal now. But we can't take the item back up by law. It's in stone by the Constitution of the state. We just can't do it. I know that's a terrible excuse, but it's the truth. So if we can get your contact information, we will follow up with you.
Yeah, what if I don't have contact information, and following me is all you guys have been doing? So in that case, I would have to what?
I'm sorry, you can reach out to one of our offices, or you can leave a way to get in touch with you, if you would like to call my office.
Can you head to one of our offices now? Of course. Sorry, Chairman.
No, no, please.
Can you head to my office now, please? I would appreciate that. That's the fifth floor. Okay, I want you to talk to Nicole. We'll give you some direction, okay? But I'm sorry for the confusion. It happens all the time. I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay. So we're back to addressing item C1 on the Kern Sanitation Authority consent agenda. Is there anybody that would like to speak to that? Okay, seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the Board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda and adjourn as the Kern Sanitation Authority and reconvene as the Kern County Board of Supervisors.
So move. Second.
Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. All ayes.
Thank you. We've reconvened as the Kern County Board of Supervisors and will now consider item number two, public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the Board on any matter not on this agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the Board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. They may ask a question for clarification, make a referral to staff for factual information, or request staff to report back to the Board at a later meeting. Also, the Board may take action to direct staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. Speakers are limited to two minutes. Please state and spell your name before making your presentation. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the Board on a matter not on this agenda? Please come to the podium.
My name is Joy Kennedy from Edmondson Acres, J-O-Y-K-E-N-N-E-D-Y. I was here last week regarding the fireworks issue and the lack of enforcement in my neighborhood. Thursday at 10:10 PM, one of our so-called repeat offenders shot off about 30 aerials and roman candles over a 30-second period. This was after the State Rangers came at 4:00 PM and left. The fire department was called. They came out quickly, but were not there more than two minutes. I've been in contact with officials in Tehachapi and Shafter. Both, excuse me, have passed urgency ordinances to widen the number of available officers for citation issuing to include their police and code enforcement. The main issue I can see is enforcement. Whether it's lack of numbers or apathy, something needs to be done. There are comments being left on the Nextdoor app all over town. Yesterday, there were 105 people who want fireworks stopped, all in just the last couple of days. That's on one little teeny section of that website. If there is a countrywide ban on illegal fireworks, how and why can't we get this enforced? The task force is only in effect two days a year, not enough. Can we get the police and the code enforcement to participate? My unincorporated area falls through the cracks on all issues. We have already had enough, and it gets worse daily. If it had been enforced back in April, perhaps these repeat offenders in my neighborhood might now be bragging about how peaceful it is to live there. If it's a possibility that the Board can issue an urgency ordinance and get it backed by sufficient enforcement, please start it now. I hope you will quit band-aiding the problem and do something about it.
Thank you. Could we get our next speaker to come to the podium, please?
Hello. My name is Sue Cornell. I live in Adobe Estates. And backing up what Joy says, it's a constant problem with the fireworks. It's not just fireworks, but firecrackers. And on this last Saturday, a firecracker was let off in front of my house, and the front yard caught fire. I called the fire department, but by the time they came, I had it out. But the fire came about four and a half feet from my house. It's not just about the noise. It's about the danger for all of us. And we already have a law about firecrackers, but again, it doesn't seem like it's getting enforced. It's hard because I had a camera, but my camera wasn't... I couldn't back it up. One of my neighbors said he got something, but he's out of the country right now. I'm taking care of his house, actually. And he said he would get me a copy of what he saw. But there's children all over the neighborhood, and I just feel like there must be something better that we can do to keep our city safe for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we get our next speaker, please?
Good afternoon. My name is Eddie Lane. A few weeks ago, I addressed this Board regarding Proposition 68 per capita funding issues. I missed the PowerPoint last week. Would wish to comment now. What was missing? Candor. These 1.47 million are for all of Kern County, yet Kern County's Master Parks Plan is being ignored, and the Hart Park Master Plan used selectively. The PowerPoint indicated that these are grant funds. More accurately, this is a non-competitive allocation regarding which the state expects community engagement. Yet, with regard to these specific per capita funds, there's been no community meetings. No Parks Commission meeting elicited input for options. No community engagement. And the Parks and Recreation Commission and the public were repeatedly told these funds were already committed. Your commission was misled. What is true is there's been considerable engagement by the Kern River Parkway's Hart Park Working Group regarding Hart Park issues. 16 meetings during the last two years. Common sense priorities carefully developed, agreed to during an April 8 meeting with Kern County Administrative Officer Ryan Alsop, and reported to the Commission with the request they be added to the Hart Park Master Plan. Our request, including that the Peacock House restoration be added to the Master Plan, has gone nowhere. I would invite a representative from the $40,000 design group to walk with the working group stakeholders in Hart Park for a grounds-level look at Hart Park. As it stands, millions are being proposed without any current community engagement from the Parkway Foundation or the working group. I would again invite staff from the County Ministry of Office to engage with the Kern River Parkway Foundation to develop an interpretive center Phase II application... That's what I gave you. ...for regional park program funding, for much-needed improvements on property adjacent to the interpretive center. Interpretive centers are a top priority for these funds. Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Any other speakers on public presentations? Okay, seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, we'll now consider item number three, board member announcements and reports. Any board reports or comments? Okay, seeing, yeah, seeing none, we'll now go to item number 25, and that is the opposition letter for SB 419, revised workforce standards for oil and gas well contractors. And so we'll go ahead and open that up for public comment. So if you'd like, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hello, my name is Ryan Nance, and I'm a third-generation journeyman carpenter and a graduate of a state-approved apprenticeship program. I'm speaking on behalf of the thousands of carpenter apprentices currently employed in California, and I'd like to discuss agenda item CA 25 regarding the opposition letter that your board is considering today. I disagree with the opposition letter that is being presented before you as it paints a picture that is incorrect. For instance, the letter gives percentage requirements that are incorrect. In fact, so that the board clearly understands skilled and trained workforce language has different percentage requirements for different scopes of work. The scope that I come from is carpentry. Construction industry is not a broad brush as this letter suggests. The letter also suggests that these incorrect percentage requirements will somehow cause unemployment, but to quote the actual text of the bill itself, "A phase-in for this requirement will avoid disruption of the industry." I can tell you that apprenticeship percentage requirements exist on basically every taxpayer-funded project in this entire state, but what you're voting on today is to put the Kern County stamp of approval on this document. Construction is my area of expertise, and there are fallacies in the letter that you're considering signing, and I'd ask the board not to sign this letter of opposition. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and staff. My name is Josh Taylor, and today I'm representing the thousands of skilled and trained Southwest carpenters, and I'm here to speak on item 25, SB 419. But before I do, I'd like to remind the board that the Southwest carpenters have continually stood in solidarity with the oil and gas industry of Kern County as that industry provides a great deal of economic stability and sustainability within our communities. Just prior to the pandemic, our group spoke in these very chambers in favor of protecting our local and oil/gas industry in January of 2020 and continue to do so today. SB 419 has a lot of benefit to offer the oil and gas industry. A skilled and trained workforce by way of accredited apprenticeship programs is one more way to ensure that every individual working or seeking work in the oil and gas would have access to training and certifications of the highest caliber, thus ensuring the highest level of safety on those projects and sites. When the largest oil lease owners in East Kern made the decision just a few years ago to hire only contractors who employ individuals either enrolled in or graduates from an apprenticeship program, workers were not displaced in the numbers alleged as a potential in the staff letter addressed to this board. In fact, the group of mill rights and scaffolders who are currently working in the Elk Hills area on compressors, generators, pumps, equipment, et cetera, are the same local residents that have been up on that hill for years. When the apprentice and graduate component was added to the construction and maintenance contracts, what really happened was an increase in access to training for those individuals, and some of the employers of these workers have changed over time as contracts are bid out, but the faces and families of those performing the work at those sites are the same. As to the statement from the staff letter alleging jeopardized good-paying jobs for Central Valley Californians, the aforementioned tradesmen not only kept their jobs when the site requirements changed, but their families' livelihoods and incomes increased. For these reasons, I ask the board to not adopt a position of opposition on SB 419. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Chairman, may I ask just a quick question? Thank you. So then you support 419. It's a little confusing, I'm sorry. Got it. Thank you.
Hi, Russell Johnson, on behalf of the Associated Builders and Contractors. First, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors, in particular Supervisor Maggard, for your impassioned plea to put this item on the agenda. SB 419 is a solution looking for a problem, and your consideration of opposing it today is absolutely the right choice. So if we look at what the impetus for the bill is, according to the author, Senator Stern, his impetus is that the oil and gas industry is unsafe. That's a factual inaccuracy. The oil and gas industry in California, according to Bureau Labor statistic data, is that the total recordable incident rate, which is a fancy way to figure out if you're safe or not, six is danger, four means you're still dangerous, two means you're considered somewhat safe. The oil and gas industry is a .8. That means it's below one, which means it's almost near perfect in terms of its safety. In comparison to some other industries, state and local government is at a six. Realtors are even less safe than the oil and gas industry. So the impetus for the bill was safety by Senator Stern. Also, I think it's important to point out that this bill requires two additional things. This bill would require implementation of what's called skilled and trained workforce mandates. Those skilled and trained workforce mandates would then be put upon the oil and gas industry, which makes every job in the oil and gas industry an apprenticable craft subject to the very stringent rules of apprenticeship in the state of California. I want to remind you, this is an industry that wasn't subject to apprenticeship before. So when it's not subject to apprenticeship before as a requirement like public works jobs are for the county or for the city, there are no state apprenticeship programs to serve this very specific industry. So as a result, what you have is you're going to displace thousands of workers. This bill will potentially affect 17,000 workers. In the way it's written now, 2021, 30% of the workforce is affected. 2022, 45. 2023, then 60% of the workforce. This will affect the 17,000 working men and women who are working today, who have high-paying, good-earning jobs because of the oil and gas industry. This bill was started on a false idea that the oil and gas industry was unsafe and that they were unskilled. Nothing could be further from the truth. The safety data does not support that the oil and gas industry needs to have the skilled and trained workforce mandate applied upon it, or that they are unsafe. I ask your board to please, on behalf of the Associated Builders and Contractors, to vote to oppose SB 419. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll also add the Kern County Hispanic Chamber, the Kern Home Builders Association, the Kern Black Chamber of Commerce, the Kern Hispanic Chamber, and Central Valley Biz Fed are also in opposition to SB 419. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have our next speaker, please?
Wow, where have we all been, huh, for over a year? What a delight. Chairman Peters, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is John Spalding, and I represent 6,000 building and construction trades and oil and gas workers here in Kern, Indian Valley County. One of the things that I think is an inaccuracy is that you talk about this bill displacing workers. This bill does not displace workers. This bill, hang on a second. Technology is not my strong suit. In the bill, sections 3280, J1 and 2, section 3281, A2 and 3281, B4A and B cover these concerns. This language is directly from the bill. 3281 states skilled and journey means a person or a worker who meets both of the following criteria. The worker either graduated from an apprenticeship program for the applicable occupation that is approved by the chief, or has at least as many hours of on-the-job experience in the applicable occupation that would be required to graduate from an apprenticeship program for the applicable occupation that is approved by the chief. Two, the worker is being paid at least a rate equivalent to the prevailing hourly rate for the journey person in the applicable occupation and geographic area. 3281A2 states this section shall only apply to work performed by a licensed contractor. This section does not apply to the employees of the owner or operator of the well or production facility, or prevent the owner or operator from using its own employees to perform any work that has not been assigned to contractors while the employees of the contractor are present and working. B, an apprenticeship program approved by the chief may enroll with advanced standing. Applicants with relative prior work experience performing work at wells or production facilities subject to this section in accordance with approved apprenticeship standards of this Number one, we're assuming that we're only talking about Kern County contractors coming in and doing this work. We're talking about the closing of wells, of abandoned wells. That's what brought this conversation to the surface. Contractors from out of state can come in, bring their workforce with less than our standards that we are used to here in Kern County. This not only establishes safety standards, it establishes wage standards. It will, however, also apply the opportunity for our oil and gas workers to air apprenticeship programs as they start the transition from oil and gas into the other industries, such as the building and construction industry. And we have already done that. There seems to be quite a bit of confusion as to why there was the displacement of workers at California Resources Corporation. The reason that, and that was not true, as stated by Josh Taylor, was not true. A lot of those people that were out there are still out there. They're working for contractors that are now paying better wages, better training, and still there. What started that was that the state building trades signed an agreement with California Resources that they would rely on us to do the training, and the payback would be the raising of standard of wages. That's what we're trying to do here. That's what this bill actually says in the body of the bill. I don't misquote. Thank you very much. And again, I'm still opposed to the bill. I'm still supportive of the bill and opposed to the letter.
Thank you.
Laura Liovia, Director of Kern County Planning and Natural Resources. I'd like to point out that the previous speakers have uncovered the real purpose of this bill. The real purpose of this bill is to push a just transition. I have no directive from your board that Kern County has agreed that oil is going to go away. And the previous speaker just pointed out that the purpose of this bill is to make sure that when we abandon all the wells, that there are particular standards. Abandonment of wells is a routine process that goes on right now. Just transition has made as their highest goal tearing down the thousands of acres of tanks, facilities, and wells, and somehow that will replace the $80 million a year that Kern County now gets. As a reminder, abandonment of wells actually takes something off the tax rolls, and we get no money. The opposition to this bill should be because it is a cover for a just transition policy, and your board has not taken a position of support for just transition. Those are my comments as someone who has high respect for the unions, high respect for ABC, and high respect for all the people who work in Kern County. But forcing Kern County to take a position of support for just transition is a premature action that your board has not taken yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Liovia. Are there any other speakers on this item?
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Stephen Gomez. I am the Business Manager of Local 460, which is Plumbers, Pipe Fitters, United Association of Plumbers and Pipe Fitters, and HVAC Technicians. I represent today workers out in the oil industry. I would hope you wouldn't oppose 419, and for the reasons that Josh and Ryan talked about, obviously, the training, they've covered that, so I won't talk much about that. A couple of the fallacies, though, that they've talked about indeed are true. You know, in talking about displacement, when CRC came onboard, they didn't displace any workers out there. There's processes in place for these guys to come in and become a member of this local, to become family members, and many of them have and are still working. So I want to say that that fallacy about displacement of workers, I just can't take that one. Also, you know, I just want you guys to know that this is, I don't believe that the well abandonment is just part of this. This is not what the majority of workers are doing out there now. You know, the well, oil and gas maintenance world is not just about abandonment of wells. So, you know, talking about the just transition, whether that's coming or not, I don't believe this has given way to that. I believe this is just talking about the oil industry as a whole. So for purposes and reasons stated earlier, and the members that I represent in Kern County, I represent about 700 working family members just in Kern County, but I do have sister locals up and down the state that have oil and gas reserves in their areas as well. And so for reasons stated, I would hope that you don't oppose this bill and not send a letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for any questions or comments. And if there are no questions or comments... Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you there, Supervisor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With all due respect to my friends that spoke today, I do respect you and pay close attention to your perspective, but there is no mistake that there is an onslaught underway emanating from Sacramento to end an industry that not only feeds, but pays for all of the essential services that we deliver. Everything from hospitals, healthcare, mental health care, human services, welfare benefits that we give people, not to mention public safety. And as I said last week when I spoke about this, I will continue to do, I will oppose at every level what we need to do to keep Sacramento from ending the very way of life and our ability to take care of all the nearly million people that live here in Kern County. So with that in mind, I will motion that we adopt a position in opposition to SB 419.
Second. Thank you. Supervisor Perez?
Thank you. You know, I haven't been confused by a matter this much in a long time, so I want to say to my friends and brothers in the oil industry, reaffirm my commitment to who you are and what you do, and to Kern County. These are my brothers in the trades. I trust you 100%. This is a confusing, complicated matter that I don't entirely comprehend at this stage. I'd like to learn more from you guys, but certainly, in what is a close and difficult call, I have to stand with my friends in the trades who I've worked with for a long time, but I certainly would like more information and more help in understanding how we can close this gap because pitting you guys against, you know, our brothers and sisters in oil is not good, and I know you feel that. But I appreciate you being here today. That means a lot to me, and I know my colleagues know where I stand in our defense of Kern County and the oil industry, but this certainly confuses things, so it's unfortunate. But thank you. I'll be in opposition to my colleagues today, out of full respect, of course.
Thank you. Any other comments on the board? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, four eyes, one opposed. Supervisor Perez?
Thank you. Having no additional items to consider today, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, July 20, 2021, at 9:00 AM. Summate. Without objection, we're adjourned. With that objection, we're adjourned.